... laying around, barely touched dinner before, Starburst jelly beans. I got candy bars, I had to settle for the cell for Lily.
You should go down to CVS, no, they're 50% off.
We'll start with the pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence for Julian Wilcox. Pledge allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberated and just as strong.
And Julian Wilcox, for those that may not remember, he was a music teacher here for 37 years. Okay. All right, we will start with the approval minutes from our April 2 meeting. Do we have a motion to accept them as submitted?
Sure do.
Call in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. All right, we have public comment. Is there any public comment? Do we have anybody that would like public comments? No? Okay. All right, we are going to start off with a couple of recognitions that we have this evening. And I believe Mr. Preston will go first.
Good evening.
This past winter, we had three Walton wrestlers win sectional championships, and we wanted to honor them. Chandler Merwin was a sectional champion at 126 pounds and also was a New York State champion. The first New York State champion we've had in over 20 years and only the third in wrestling all time. So, we'd like to congratulate you on that accomplishment.
Wow, congratulations.
Nice job.
I also want to tell you about the other two wrestlers that won as well. Sophomore Cody Merwin Chandler's brother won the 113-pound sectional championship. Senior Caleb Robinson won the sectional title at 120 pounds. So, congratulations to those boys as well. Chandler, this year, had a record of 43 and 5, which is the second-most wins all time, to your teammate Caleb this year. He was a 2018, 2019 section four champion, two-time state finalist. 2019 state champion has a career record of 146 and 31 with 21 career pins. And as I said, he becomes the third Walton wrestler all time to win a state championship. We also want to acknowledge his parents, Manny Lambrecht and Matt Merwin, because obviously you couldn't do it without them taking you to Pee Wee tournaments since you were very, very little. Also Caleb Robinson, who isn't here right now, his parents are Tim and Missy Robinson. Caleb had a career record of 46 and 5, 32 pins, which are both school records. For his career, he was a two-time section four champion, four-time New York State place winner at the state tournament, has 202 career wins, 112 career pins, which is a school record, and was a five-time Panine Dome champion, which is tied for most all time as well. So, we graduate this year two very, very accomplished wrestlers. And obviously, we get Cody back, who's only a sophomore. So, I just wanted to present our state champions to you. Also want to thank John Jackson, their coach with a tie on tonight.
That's why you couldn't see him.
John will do anything for these boys, and John dedicates himself to wrestling 12 months out of the year, seven days a week. He makes them great wrestlers, but he also turns into great young men, which is, as coaches, what we want, is for them to learn so that when they go into the real world, they have these life lessons that we hope to teach them. So, I want to congratulate you, congratulate Caleb and Cody, and thank you for your time.
Yes, congratulations.
Congratulations. Very nice. Very nice.
All right, and we have another award.
We have a citizenship award for Rachel Trimble.
We do. Would you like to help me with this?
Sure.
Okay, all right. Well, as many people here know, Rachel performed above and beyond the call of duty recently with one of our other students while on the bus. Student was choking, and Rachel came to help that child and actually came to the rescue as Dave back there was trying to get everything secured for the bus. And so, I know that we have a couple awards to hand out with respect to this. We would like to give Rachel our sincere thanks and our pride and a certificate. And shall we go do that right now?
Yes.
So, this says awards for Rachel Trimble, having exhibited exceptional commitment during a moment of crisis and for providing a positive impact to our school and community. And we are very, very, very proud of you and tend to...
I have to say, knowing Rachel for many years, I'm not surprised. I'm not surprised. Just glad that you were there and helped. And then we have another one for Rachel, right?
From John Lauffer, from Utica National.
Mr. Lauffer? Yep.
I'd just like to say that during this incident, all the pieces of the puzzle fell together like it should. The students around the kid that was choking let the driver know. The driver then knew his students on the bus, knew he could call Rachel until he could get back there because he knew she was certified CPR and first aid. So, he did what he had to do at that point. And hats off to Rachel, who just jumped in there and did what she had to do. It was like she'd done before. And you know, talking with her, BNG come up and did a thing for her. And while he was there, I mean, we were talking, and she said, "I just did it." You know, she just did it. So, she was trained well, she knew what she had to do, and that was good. BNG, like I said, did a story on her, they come up. We had on our website, other transportation publications have it on there also throughout the state. So, I'm going to hand it over to John. This is John Lauffer from Utica National Insurance Company, our insurance company here at the school, and he's got a couple of awards for him.
Thank you, Tracy. It's hard when, and this is the third time we've been through, I had a little description of what happened, but everybody pretty much knows that by now. But good evening, I am John Lauffer, the safety representative for Utica National Insurance Group, working with your school district. I work alongside the dedicated professionals at Smith Brothers Insurance Agency, the partners. My role is to help our schools identify the many hazards and exposures they face and assist in implementing control measures to reduce the likelihood of a claim. I have thoroughly enjoyed all the work I've done over the many years here in Walton with all the staff members. Your district has a positive way of thinking toward risk management and safety that has helped significantly to reduce the number and cost of insurance claims over the past five years. It also helps to keep the students, the staff, the visitors in the buildings safe and secure. On March 27, as everybody has said, a crisis was averted by two amazing people in your district, school bus driver Dave Edwards and student Rachel Trimble. These two heroes have said time and time again, they were just doing their job or just doing what they were trained to do. While this may be true, but the speed at which they operated surely helped the outcome become a positive one. In a choking incident, even a couple of seconds can make a big difference as to the outcome. My understanding is it took five thrusts to get it to come out? I mean, talk about, you know, grace under pressure, sticking with it for that long. School bus drivers are highly qualified professionals and are trained extensively in how to handle countless emergency situations, but something like this might come up just once in the career of a driver. Volunteer firefighters and first aid personnel are also highly trained in how to handle numerous and many unthinkable emergency situations, and they do this mostly on their own time and out of the goodness of their hearts. The world is a better place because of people like these two individuals. At this time, I'd like to ask Dave and Rachel step up to receive a certificate of commendation on behalf of all the staff at Utica National and for me personally, as a parent of two high school daughters. There you go. Thank you. You're winning the meeting.
Thank you. And thank you again, Rachel. You know, a lot of people would be afraid to get involved in that situation, and it sounded like you didn't even think about it, you just did it. And we really appreciate it, and hopefully that will get other people to think about it, that it's okay. It's okay to get involved, and you know, and maybe more people will go for the CPR training and stuff. Are you involved in the explorers or anything?
Yeah, I'm in the fire department explorers.
Okay, good. We're lucky. Thank you. All right. And we are, now, we're going on with the rest of the meeting. If you guys have something to do this evening, we don't want to make you feel like you have to sit here and listen to the whole thing. You're more than welcome to step out, that's fine. We have...
(Inaudible).
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Dave.
Good night.
All right, we are up to new faculty introductions.
I think I'd like to ask Mr. Dupra to do the introduction here.
Sure.
It's my pleasure at this point in time to introduce Mrs. Rebecca Doig, who is our newest high school music teacher, and her life mentor, not just her school mentor, and father, Mr. Raymond Bartlett. Please come out.
So Rebecca is a graduate of Walton College and has her master's degree from Concordia University. I'm really excited for her to be here to teach with me. She has been, she was in Gilboa, Consville before this, started off as a chorus teacher and then took over the band program. Band program was five kids?
Three.
Three kids when she started there. And in the four years she was there, she built the program up to about 25 students. And a great program, she's a great teacher, really excited to have her to be part of our music department.
Thank you. One thing I just wanted to say, like Mr. Dupra said, that Mr. Bartlett has been my mentor my whole life. We actually, we're really excited this year, we were doing an exchange concert between Gilboa and Walton, and Walton High School Band is going to join Gilboa on their May 7th concert. We've been practicing two songs together, and we're going to combine and do that. And then they're going to come here for our concert, and we're going to combine.
Nice.
So, then I ended up here before the concert happened, but we're still going to do it. My replacement at Gilboa, it's still excited, the kids are excited. So, that just shows how we've been working together this whole time. So, then I just started here April 1st, and really excited just to be home. I liked teaching at Gilboa, but I never thought of leaving. I didn't want to move there or anything. So, I was very excited to get the opportunity to teach, you know, at home with the kids that I know and the faculty and the parents that I know. So, very excited.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
We're happy to have you.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right. We have discussion items. I think we're up to, yes, 4A. We have a special meeting on Thursday, April 25. This will be an exec, a proposed executive session to discuss future employment of a particular person. 5:15 or 5:30, which one works best for everyone?
5:30 would be easier.
I'd say 5:30 would be better.
5:30?
Neither, there's a baseball game again. 5:30 is fine.
I understand where you're at.
Plan on 5:30 then. All right, and we have attached, her information is the 2019-20 meeting schedule and times. Does anybody have a copy of that? We have a couple of the meetings set for 7:00 PM. Do we want to put, keep them all 6:00 PM?
That'd be my preference.
Mine would be mine.
Yeah.
6:00 PM? Okay. So, that'll be one. The only one that would change a little bit would, well, unless we did a building walkthrough earlier, we have the August 20th, the building walkthrough starting at 6:00 PM, and then the regular meeting starting at 7:00.
We can make it 5:00 and 6:00.
Would it be easier to do that walkthrough on a separate night than the board meeting? Because that is a mad dash run.
Right.
And the staff does a lot of work, and I feel like we're just blowing through.
I couldn't agree with you more.
I mean, because we're on a...
I'd rather I do that split off.
Yeah, we're on a timeline to get done, so I...
Okay, so let's keep the meeting at 6:00 PM, and then we'll...
The walkthrough should be done before that meeting.
Yep, so...
I could email everyone.
Couple days before even?
Maybe the week before.
Yep. I agree with that because we were, you know, rushing, and even Scott had come down, we're like, sorry, we just don't have a lot of time to discuss things.
There's a lot of good summer work to happen, so...
Right.
We need to look at, respectful of your time.
All right, so yeah, we can reschedule that one, and then the rest of them will be at 7:00 PM, or 6:00 PM, I'm sorry, they were 7:00. Now, April 20th, that's the BOSI's administrative budget vote.
Right, you could change the time, but not the date.
Correct. I know it's hard to get a quorum now at noon, so do we want to look at 5:30?
Wow.
Or 5:00, 5:30?
Is that the 20th?
Yeah.
5:30? Probably be for me, unless everybody else can.
Yeah.
That'll work with you, Mr. Dutcher?
It'll work with you. We'll celebrate, we'll have cupcakes on that day, that sounds good.
All right, the other thing, I had gone to a Workers' Compensation Alliance meeting on April 5. It was kind of the, the meeting was more so about the reorganization of the alliance, the appointments of the attorneys and stuff like that. They did add another recital, I believe they went from 7:00 to 8:00. Or no, they had, what was it? They added one more, and I'm trying to think which one that was. I guess they changed 7:00, and then they also adjusted 8:00. But for the most part, the meeting was just informative. That was the first one that I had attended. Didn't really get time to talk to a lot of people there because it was, they meant business. You come in, you sat down, and they started the meeting immediately. But from, you know, what I gathered, it's pretty traditional process with the Workers' Compensation Stop Alliance, they did the reports, they discussed additional insurances for some of the leaders that are in charge of it. They added, I think, $12,000 to the budget. But other than that, the budget is pretty much the same as the previous year, other than the $12,000. And that was the other thing that they did add. It's a little bit harder to get out of the alliance now than it was before. If you want to get out, you have to submit a written report before the next school year. So, that was one thing that they did update that. But it was a good meeting. We do need to discuss selecting a representative from our district for the 1920...
You might better leave it with everybody as being a member of or being part of it. And that way, nobody, no one person has to go.
Right.
But if you, if you choose one and they can't go, that messes things up. So, if you just open it up and leave it for the whole board, that way, if you count around, they can't go, Kevin Trillo or Arnie Maryland's been a couple of times, and I've been out, you know, through all the... I would say that you'd be smart to leave it that way.
I'd agree with that.
Right, and yeah, if somebody is unable to make it, and it's only twice a year.
Put out a good meal for you.
Twice a year. Did we receive that new agreement?
Yes.
It's in our packet, okay. All right. Because we were supposed to also, they're going to send out in June, I believe, the treasures report, because the treasury report only went up to January and February. All right, so, yeah, I agree with that. That way, you know, anyone can go and represent us. All right, the other thing, we have the Delaware County CDO workforce has requested the use of a room to meet with clients that do not have transportation. Once a month?
Would be once a month on an ongoing basis.
All right.
I did speak with Mr. Barcalo, and he said that anybody who would be coming to the building would have an appointment with him.
Okay.
We could get a list of the people that are coming in that particular day.
So, this is during the school?
During the school day.
School day, okay. All right.
We would want to limit where they may go.
Right.
We could offer this room or possibly the business office conference room, and it would just be a few people at a time.
All right.
But...
So, there would be no need for a key or anything because it would just be when school's in session?
Right.
Does anybody object to that? I think, I think you're right, the business, the boardroom or the business office conference room, you know, would be the best locations. I think this would be the, you know, the best here.
I was thinking...
Do you need a motion for that?
I don't think so, no, it just happens to me.
We don't have any conflicts with that, with anything else that we have on our...
Not that we know of, but they're flexible in when they have their meetings too, right now, you ask people.
He hasn't said anything to me about a set in stone date.
He may not have anybody some months, you know, so...
If they don't have transportation.
Right, no, I, I'm not questioning the CDO in that, I'm just trying to run through the policies and everything to make sure that we're not doing something that, on our own, that we creating...
We can review that and make sure, and he would have to submit a building use request.
Okay, because I don't, I guess that's where I was at. I don't, I'm not trying to deny it, but I don't want to give it just a stamp without, in circumvent, our policies and procedures that, we have a procedure to go through, like, as long as we follow the procedure.
Mr. Thomas and I can look at the policy and make sure.
Just, you know...
And the biggest thing is obviously security, so somebody's there to meet them as they get here.
Right, so we don't...
So, take that through.
Right, meet them at the door or whatever, or we have that, just so we're not having a...
Right, and like you said, they would be required to fill out a building use. So, all right. Facilities committee meeting tonight after the meeting, and then policy committee meeting on Thursday, May 2 at 5:30. And then also, we will have a reminder for our meeting tomorrow at 5:15, our quick BOSI's meeting.
BOSI's administrative budget vote.
Administrative budget vote meeting. Is there anything else? All right. We are up to number five, correspondence. I don't believe we have any of those at this time. Presentations. I believe we have students here that are Shattered Dreams. Okay.
Hi, Ron, I'm Christian Dutek.
I'm Camberleven Falkenberg.
I'm not sure, does anyone know of Shattered Dreams that Walton did four years ago? Well, for those of you that don't know, Walton did a Shattered Dreams project four years ago when we were in eighth grade, so all the high schoolers are not aware of the project. They might have heard it, but they were not involved. It's a mock drunk driving simulation almost, but it includes individuals from within the school district. So, the day kind of plays out. I met with Mr. Dupra before spin break, I met with Mr. Thomas over spin break, we both said it was a great idea, so I wanted to just run it by you guys, make sure it's okay. So, the day will start around 1 o'clock after lunch, we'll all head down to the auditorium, and then it's like a video up on the screen, and it's of like students that are like partying like after prom, and then it's showing that like they get in a car accident, and then we come out here on the school lawn, and then there's like a mock crash, and it shows the students and the individuals involved. I don't want to give too much away because it's a big shock factor that we're trying to like play on the school. And so, the students will come from the auditorium and out onto the grass, and Walton, PD, Walton Fire Department, and EMA.
Yes.
They've all already agreed to take part. We want to do it Wednesday, May 29.
Yes.
Wednesday, May 29. So, I just wanted to run that by you, make sure everything's okay. I don't want you guys driving by the school, and there'd be ambulance, and the police cars, and the fire engine, and you guys, "What's happening?"
What's going on, Corey? I do remember the last one, and wasn't here for it, but I remember when it happened and some of the pictures that, oh, it was so real, so...
And I think it'll send a very positive message to the students. And we were planning it for that week right before prom, so that it's very relevant to like what's going to be coming up.
Good.
What grades will be involved?
Just high school.
Just high school.
Because it can get graphics, we didn't want to extend it to middle school.
Mm-hmm.
All right, do we have your blessing?
Yeah.
Thank you, guys. And just so you know, Cam has worked with Fred's Body Shop to get the two cars, so we're pretty much underway, and we're almost there. So, thank you, guys, for letting us...
Good, excellent, great idea. Good luck with it.
Thank you, guys.
Good idea. All right. Do we have any additions to the agenda?
Do not.
All right, we are up to eight, the consent agenda. We have the financial reports, the approval, yes, the approval of the joint finance of workers' compensation agreement extension, and the establishment of a few scholarships. Establish the Regina Austin O'Neill Butcher and Chuck Butcher Endowment Fund in memory of Thomas H. O'Neill and Cecilia Austin O'Neill. Establish the Sergeant John J. Finn U.S. Marine Corps Memorial Scholarship, and establish the Heart of the Warrior Scholarship Fund in memory of Destiny Twymon. We have two resignations, Erin Pierce, effective August 31, and Hannah Guptill, September 1, 2019. Then we have a few appointments, Connie Armstrong, substitute custodial worker, Kristen Coons, the substitute teacher, substitute teacher aide, and substitute school monitor. And I believe that is it of the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Move it.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. All right. Now, our non-consent, number nine, new business. To accept donations, $812 of... To accept donations, $812 of proceeds from the PTSA Cornhole Tournament Television Raffle to the class of 2019. This will help defray the cost of the senior trip. $165 proceeds from the PTSA Cornhole Tournament Bake Sale to the class of 2020. $4,000 from the William O'Neill to the Regina Austin O'Neill Butcher and Chuck Butcher Endowment Fund in memory of Thomas O'Neill and Cecilia Austin O'Neill. $1,000 from the William O'Neill to the Thomas O'Neill Memorial Award. $50 from Mr. and Mrs. Jay Lynn Simons to the Walton Football Program in memory of Kathy Hoover. And $50 from Mr. and Mrs. Dennis Ammon to the Townsend Elementary School in memory of Carl Whitaker. I hope our students realize how much these donations, you know, are helpful, and the people donating have really helped our students out a lot. Do we have a motion to accept those donations?
I'll make it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. All right, 9B, approve Ogden Library Proposition for the ballot. This is in the sum of $123,916. Do we have a motion? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. All right. We are up to the budget, 1920 budget. Are we making motions? Does anybody else have any questions on the budget? Let Tim walk us through some of it.
So I'm not sure, I guess, whether we're going to have a question answered, or whether he just wants me to go through the basics of what we have. I don't want to give it all away for the big presentation in a couple of weeks, kind of a preview, but I think you guys, everybody received?
Yes.
Yes. Any other? Okay. This is, I guess, what's on, too? Anything else?
Going, going.
You got nothing to read off of.
All right. You got it all memorized right there? Right. I think you guys have, Meg, Hungerford has started Monday, yesterday, right? And two, my credit, she came back today. I once threatened that if I created a problem or stressed her out and she didn't come back the next day, that would be my fault. So I didn't scare her too badly, so that's good.
And welcome, Meg.
The 1920 budget, we came through, I think we talked about it before, as we did our proposal, the stadium revenue went up about $605,000, which is a significant increase. That's about 4.5%. Kind of looked this afternoon, and just to kind of get an idea of how many years it's been since we've seen that kind of an increase, I think over the last five years we saw it was about 2, 2.5%, somewhere in there, on average. We did have one year that it spiked, but it was related specifically to capital payments that came in extra, so. So this is a significant increase for us. So that was good news when that came out, so we were looking forward to that. The other thing that we looked at was, we have our tax cap. So we went through and did the tax cap calculation, and as you guys know, can't refer to it as 2% tax cap because it's not always 2%. So the district, when we went through and made the calculation, it came out to the district in order to stay under the 2% tax cap could still levy 3.4% and change. I know, when does 2%, not 2% when it's calculated by the state of New York? So it was 3.4% is what it came to.
That we could go up to without having to have a super majority.
60%.
Yes.
The majority of that is related to the, some decreases in aid. So we had some increases in expenses and decreases in some of our capital aid, and so that's where the difference came. The increase is, we're, over the last couple of years, we've been increasing bus leases. So building up to the five-year period, and then it levels off, and we continue the same amount over a period of time. So each time we've added that, that increase is what our capital expenditures are that can be taken out as part of the exemption. And we have some bonds that they go through and they recalculate, and if they, if the interest that is being paid is beyond what the state average is, then they reduce that amount on our aid. And their thought is then you need to figure out whether or not you need to go back out and refinance them. At this moment in time, it's probably not advantageous to the district to do that, but each year we kind of look at that separately. So we'll see if there's any others coming off next year, and potentially we can talk about that piece. But as of this year, it was not necessarily advantageous. And that was around, a reduction of around $11,000 on the exact for that. Other than that, not much else remarkable, there are exemptions for ERS, TRS, those types of things, but those have not increased enough for there to be an exemption for those purposes, so those were at zero, so there wasn't anything. The only thing that was qualified for was the capital exemption. Any questions on the tax cap? Okay. So one of the things that we talked about is trying to still stay around the 2% dollar amount, and so was able to work that out so that the levy would only be at 2% as opposed to the 3.4%. That while we could go to that, the expectation is that we would try to stay around the 2%. So the dollar amount that we can get to on the estimated taxes or the estimated appropriations is $21,745,814. That right now is a projection, and the levy would be $6,678,723, which is the 2% increase. The biggest factors in going through the budget this year has been the increase in the health insurance. So while our, it was really nice that we received a larger-than-normal windfall on the state aid, the increase in potentially what we're getting hit with for the increase on the New York 44 pretty much chewed up most of that. So that created a situation where we have been working to try to potentially find another alternative for our health insurance, and as long as that goes through and we are able to work that out, then I think we're in good shape in terms of, we have to increase our line item, but not nearly as much as we had expected on the health insurance side. So the plan, as it were, with the health insurance, I'm not sure how much everybody knows on that, but we'll go over that anyway. The plan on the health insurance side is to pick up an Exelis plan for the 12 months next year, but in addition, start, starting in June of this year, pick up the Exelis plan for June of this year and the 12 months next year. And then also have a double coverage, so to speak, because we'd also be paying for New York 44 during the month of June and July. And the reason for that is that in order, New York 44 wasn't necessarily allowing people out, but they made the caveat that, yes, you could get out early, however, you would be responsible for runout costs. And so those runout costs, we would have to either pay for outright, which could get very expensive, or hold two insurance policies, and if any claims came through that were due to New York 44, then New York 44 would cover them as if they were contracted expenses like they would be now. Okay? And while that's an extra expense, overall, because the New York 44, or the, sorry, the Exelis plan is, that they're quoting us, is cheaper, considerably cheaper for both the district and the individuals, and so there'll be a savings for both in terms of what their contributions would be. So because of that, we can make it go, there's still an increase on the budget, but not as high as it would have been had we just stayed with the 44.
Right. Which was that, a 20% increase for them?
That was a 20% increase. Ballpark, we spend, we have spent around $300,000 a month on health insurance, so that would mean that we went to $360,000 a month. Obviously, $60,000 in 12 months is a significant increase. So the Exelis plans are actually cheaper.
Now, does, the Exelis plan, do they have something in agreement that states a cap? How high they could go up to?
For the next two years, we have, so we have the rates for this year. They can't go up more than 9.9% the following year, and can't go up more than 10.1% the year after that. Why they're not both 10% I don't know, but, you know.
It's a lot less than 20%.
Yes. Now, the part of that is that, you know, so over that time period, one of the challenges that we've had with the health insurance pieces is we have no rated experience. So because of that, usually your insurance companies, when they're going to bid on your insurance, want to know what kind of claims you've had and the experience and what, I hate to stand in my back, but one of the challenges is they don't release that information from New York 44. So Exelis, probably because they want to grab some of the business that they lost in New York 44 in the past, are willing to set some rates for us and take some limited increases over the next couple of years while we obtain some experience. And we'll see from there where we go after that.
Okay.
So the plan is, I want to be able to use, you know, the Exelis plan, but after that, one of the things that's really important to, you know, from a financial perspective is to start getting an idea of what's driving some of those costs on our claims. And with the help of, you know, our insurance broker, we'll be able to get those pieces of information that we need to see where our costs are coming from in terms of our claims and those types of things. And we'll potentially do some consumer training and whatnot to hopefully reduce some of that. And therefore, reducing those claims and that claim experience would potentially help control our increases on the premium side as well.
So theoretically, even if you switch, you can still be at 20% out three years from now, what increase?
Average has been around, I think that market-wise, they usually say 6% to 8%.
Yep.
So even this year, and I realize, you know, some of it is, so it's a difference between the financial guy and the salesman. The salesman will tell you, you know, the quote side of things, well, this last year it only went up 6%. So those people that they quoted at 9.9, they only increased it 6%. Well, it's nice information to know, but it's not necessarily something I can count on. I'm still going to count on the fact that I'm expecting at least 9.9.
At least there's a top end to it. In New York 44, there was no, you had a five-year agreement with no top end to it.
No top end and no change in terms of the number of times they could change it. Because remember now, they actually changed this year.
They just increased it, right.
Yeah. So signing a five-year contract with basically no theoretical top to it, and they can change it whenever they felt like.
Right.
Looked good on paper when you first started, and I'm sure it made it, was a decision made based on the initial numbers on it, but to have an open-ended contract like that with an insurance company makes no sense.
No. Well, by my opinion, you need to know it wouldn't make sense.
So when you're budgeting, especially with that 9.9, if you know you have 10% out three years back to back, at least you have something that you can budget for and understand, and you're not going to get blindsided by an increase.
Agreed. So that was, that's been the biggest piece, yeah, sorry.
No problem. And we're able to maintain equal plans for the most part, right?
For the most part. There are some things, they've gone through the different items, and for the most part, it's a very similar plan. One of the things that's a little different is that there are co-pays, whereas for some of the services in New York 44, there are no co-pays. So that's going to be some additional costs. And that's a little bit of a misnomer, too, because there are co-pays for some of your visits, but things like, you know, sick child under the age of 19, so if your child gets sick and you take them to the doctor, there's no co-pay for that with Exelis either. Routine physicals and those types of things, there are no co-pays with those either. Routine visits, so, yeah, blood pressure checks, those types of things, there would be co-pays with those types. The other thing that's really, was somewhat alarming for us with regards to the New York 44 plan is that the ER visit co-pay is $50 right now, and starting in 1920, New York 44 is raising it to $300. So a little steep for certain for this, you know, for our area, and concerns for people who really need to go now, choosing not to.
May not go, yeah. That's scary.
So the New York 44 wasn't just raising the premiums, they were also raising the co-pays.
Changing some of the other things.
So realistically, you're looking at substantially more than a 20% increase with that plan.
Could be depending on how you utilize the services, yes.
In a perfect world, would it behoove us to be able to shop insurances on a calendar year, to be able to keep everybody on the same playing field as far as insurance companies go? Because they tend to, they tend to raise and outcompete each other year after year, what they do with this. If you can catch them on the bottom swing every single time, you maximize our benefits to the district. Is that, is that just pie in the sky? Is that a possibility, or is that outside the realm?
At least going with the contracts, you know, like when a contract's coming up, looking at the insurance again, at the very least.
So on your contract, so you're saying if you had a contract with staff, if you had a five-year contract with staff, find something that was comparable with a five-year, here's the fees for five years, so you can realistically budget it, and then bring that all to a head with negotiation time?
Yeah.
I was thinking more, more language towards, is there any way you can get to be able to shop equivalent coverage on a year-to-year basis to catch all those downswings, you know what I mean?
It's much like anything else, they don't offer the same exact item ever, right? I mean, you can look online for a stove, and the stove might have a certain model number, but the one you buy from Lowe's versus the one you buy from Home Depot, even though the model is substantially similar, there are sometimes some differences.
I know municipalities set up, they set up committees that generally look at insurance with the broker on a year-to-year basis in order to keep them competitive, and maybe that's something we could look at on a, on a big scale, is set up an actual, you know, health insurance committee that looks at that. I'm just trying to think.
That is certainly an advantage.
I just don't understand how they can jump such astronomical ways.
That's certainly an advantage of a broker over being part of a consortium, right? Because the broker is not necessarily tied to an individual insurance company. They can shop a little bit as well. The risk with those types of things is that when you say, you know, have the same coverage, there's always a little bit different. And, you know, even when we've gone through and shopped the Exelis plans, they were not exactly the same. They're, you know, a little different in subtle ways, but those subtle ways, because there's always positive and negative impacts when people change insurance companies, you know, depending on the formulary, and so you might be taking a particular medication that's in this formulary, but it's not in somebody else's. And so every time I've been involved with something that has switched, there's always been people that have been unhappy because for them, that particular thing didn't work out, but for others, they were pleased because it worked out in their favor.
And if I remember, the Exelis plan before we went to New York 44, we were going to get penalized because it was considered the Cadillac Plan per employee.
So we had those kinds of challenges before. Some of that, they're not necessarily the same kinds of issues. Are you, you know, what, again, for, for the district, the biggest part of the health insurance plan is starting to understand what's driving those costs, because this will be the third time, third change that we've had in seven years, right? And when we ended up leaving the BTD Consortium, we had high costs, and our premiums continued to grow because we had high costs. So there's something that we need to understand about what's driving the costs around. And I have had numbers of people who have presented why they think that is. And myself have some thoughts as to why that is. The question is, what does the data show? And that's what we're hoping to make sure we can get from EMB, who's the broker for the insurance policy, to be able to demonstrate and show those numbers to us and what, and what things are driving those costs. And that's going to be an important part of controlling those costs over time.
I just think it has to be a continuing discussion, because $600,000 in a year's swing potential is...
It's huge.
And it's an important, and again, you know, this is the same, we've talked a lot about, you know, even when you're looking at your budget, and this is a big, this is a $4 million item to the district on a $21 million budget. So figuring out ways to contain costs or somehow control those things is important. It's a big chunk of change to, to just leave it out to chance. So, yeah, there are some things.
The budget, if I understand this, the 2% tax levy increase actually represents $130,000.
Correct.
$139,560.
Right.
All right. Does anybody have any additional questions, or?
I don't think, there were no other substantial changes really in the, in the budget. The only other piece was there was some movement between tuition costs for out-of-district placements and things like that, both in gen ed and special ed, and those dollars really just have been divvied up in different locations. But other than that, there were no real big changes. Last year, we talked about... Last year, we talked about, um, the fast-forward broom, and I never get them right, which one is fast-forward and which one is the other program. But we have not had as high utilization this year as we have in the past, is that right? So I did reduce some of those dollars as well. So that's, last year was budgeted a total of thirty-five and we budgeted for twenty next year. And we've averaged at the eighty-five hundred dollars the first semester and probably substantially similar from the second semester in terms of participation, so.
About how many, um, participants do we have in the broom? Is it the broom? Because they can do those courses online, correct?
No, they do that here. Our teachers get certified as instructors through SUNY broom. They, they take the course here. In the fall semester, we had a few more offerings than the spring. I would say probably about forty students in the fall, maybe thirty now.
Okay.
Twenty-five to thirty now.
Right.
Take advantage of college credit.
Right.
And if I'm right, last year was substantially higher, correct? Yes, yep. Broom has discontinued some of the, as their department chairs change there, what they're requiring for te- our teachers to be certified and have their masters in changes a little bit too. So no longer can I teach with a masters in education, which a lot of ours have, teach a course in physics. They want your masters to be in physics. And therefore, our physics is no longer certified through SUNY broom as it has been in the past. So as they change some college requirements, it affects what we're able to offer based on what they consider instructor certification.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you, yeah. And I know, I've mentioned this, I think, almost every budget season, but bringing tax collection back into the local community.
And we, um.
And I don't want to scare Meg.
Had some of those conversations, no, I actually had some of those conversations already and so that's certainly something we can talk about. Some of the other things that, you know, we've talked about in the past, not necessarily, um, you know, things that we can't do, but certainly things that we need to have a plan and forethought well in advance before we make some of the changes, particularly related to Bosse's types of things. Because it's easy, and a big one is the aid piece, right? You, you experienced the cost this year, you get the aid next year, but if you stop doing it, then you also have to count on the fact that you're going to lose the aid the following year. So there's a longer-term layout that you need to make sure you're paying attention to before you start changing those services.
All right. So, yeah, so we can start those discussions early and, you know, if there's services that we want to change at the Bosse's level to bring back in-house or something. All right, sounds good. I think that was all the questions that I had. Anybody else?
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So do we have a motion to adopt the proposed budget for the nineteen twenty school year in the amount of twenty-one million, seven forty-five, eight fourteen? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, carry. In the packet also, um, this is a requirement, um, the property tax report card that, um, is for the nineteen twenty school year. Do we have a motion to accept that? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? All right. And then, um, to adopt the capital reserve fund. And this is, um, basically to help establish a capital reserve fund, um, for future, uh, construction repairs. And not to exceed the limit of eight million with a probable term of ten years. Do we, and of course, um.
I think, yeah, I think we can't stress enough the fact that this is to establish the fund, not to fund it.
Correct.
You know, we, we obviously have to have, uh, you know, subsequent, uh, conversations and participation before it is funded and also before we withdraw any money from it, so.
Withdrawal from that account takes voter approval.
That's correct.
Right. So even if you theoretically had the eight million in there over ten years for a capital project dedicated, it still goes nowhere without, without a popular vote.
Right. And it's just, you know, to help establish this fund, to help offset the cost, you know, in a capital project.
Creating savings account and essentially for a capital project.
Can I just interject to make sure we all, because I want to make sure we have that as part of a public record thing as well, that one of the things that's really important when it comes to the capital reserve piece is that it is not exactly a saving, because you can only deposit up to eight million dollars over ten years. So if a portion of that is taken out through the taxpayer approval, I can't keep adding to that until it gets to eight million. The sum total of the dollar amount that can go into that is eight million dollars. So the idea is if you put in five million and they authorize to take out one million, you still only can put in three million dollars into there because the grand total of that. So that's an important piece for everybody to understand. It's not revolving credit. And you can just keep putting money in, taking it out, putting it in, taking it out.
By putting in some, you know, every couple of years or leaving it open, you know, help us if you do, do decide to do a project.
Over time, it's, you have money earmarked for, um, capital improvements.
It's long overdue. It's, it's very long overdue.
And we definitely have improvements to do.
Right.
I drove over on the way up here today.
Yeah. All right. So do we have a motion to adopt a capital reserve?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. All right. And next, we have, um, to adopt a bus proposition. And this is, um, to lease, um, additional buses. And I'm just trying to find my, um, not to exceed five years. And we're looking, um, currently for three sixty-five passenger buses, correct? Tim, what is our aid ratio? Um, I know I popped in that one day and it's nine, is it ninety?
Yes, transportation was ninety and around sixty-four percent for Bosse's, but ninety to us.
For transportation aid, so.
Now, is this the last of the leases?
We'll have one more after.
We'll have one more after this?
And then we'll get to.
And then you're out of.
Full amount over. And then each year, we'll still have them, but it won't increase because one will fall off and another one will start up.
So this, this just fills, one more will fill the fleet?
Correct.
And it's eighteen thousand per unit?
Roughly, yes.
Annual payment? Eighteen-seven?
Yes.
So our share, from the district standpoint, is eighteen-seven out of a hundred and fourteen, is that what we're looking at?
Right. And I remember that's, you know, it's a delayed thing, so we make the payment in the current year and the aid comes back the following year.
Backing up.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. All right. We are up to appointments. We have Kimberly Cooksy, Cooksy?
Yep.
Food Service Helper and Lori Courtney for part-time school monitor. Do we have a motion to accept those positions?
I'll make it.
Second?
I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. All right. We are up to our second reading of our policy.
I've got about twenty-four ounces of hydration in me for this one. Okay. Second reading. Policy number two thousand, board operational goals, twenty-one hundred, school board and legal status, twenty-one ten, school board powers and duties, twenty-one twenty, school board elections, twenty-one twenty point one, candidates and campaigning review, twenty-one point, or twenty-one twenty point two, voting procedures, twenty-one twenty-one, board member qualifications, twenty-one fifty, filling board vacancies, twenty-one sixty, code of ethics for all district employees, twenty-one seventy-five, defense and indemnification of public officers and employees, twenty-two ten, board organizational meeting, twenty-two twenty, board officers, twenty-two fifty, board committees, twenty-two sixty, citizens advisory committees, twenty-two seventy, school attorney, twenty-three ten, regular meetings, twenty-three twenty, special meetings, twenty-three thirty, executive session, twenty-three forty, notice of meetings, twenty-three forty-two, agenda preparation and dissemination, twenty-three fifty, board meeting procedures, twenty-three fifty-one, quorum, twenty-three fifty-one, rules of order, twenty-three sixty minutes, twenty-three eighty-two, broadcasting and taping of board meetings, twenty-four ten, policy developments, adoption, implementation and review, twenty-five ten, new board member orientation, twenty-five twenty, board member training, twenty-five twenty-one, school board conferences, conventions and workshops, twenty-seven ten, communication among individual board members, three thousand goals and objectives for administration, thirty-one hundred, superintendent of schools, thirty-one twenty, duties of the superintendent.
Thank you, Policy Committee, for all your meetings and the work that you've put into this.
Thank you, staff, for going through it too, because we're not doing this alone.
All right. So do we have a motion to adopt these as the second reading? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. All right. We are up to administrative remarks.
First, I do want to, again, for myself, make a special welcome to Meg. We had a conversation yesterday and I'm glad that she came back today. And, uh, we're looking forward to great things, uh, working with, with her, so welcome back.
Welcome.
I'll just go down the line here if anybody's got anything that they want to mention.
Um, no, we're in the middle of, uh, New York State testing season. So it's busy time.
I don't have a lot to offer, uh, considering now it's here, the last board meeting, you got a vacation in twenty, so it hasn't been a lot of change.
That's okay.
I, I, we had an administrative meeting today and I, I think I stated for the record, I'm starting to get officially paranoid about graduation, so. Just to let you know what I'm thinking about.
Are the students starting to get antsy? Are the students starting to get antsy already with this warm weather?
Oh, yeah. But not, not to the desperation level, yeah.
Yeah.
I just, a couple of things, if you're at the last board meeting, board meeting before, you appointed Cheryl Green and Luke Dunn as full-time custodians. We're now up to a full staff in the O and M department. These two individuals are really working out well. They, they do a great job and we're certainly glad to have them. I'm glad that you guys, you know, thought the same way. Over the break, we did, luckily, we had five pretty decent days. We got a lot of stuff done. We did fill a lot of potholes and I think it's really made a difference. Uh, we have some other things in mind that, you know, we'll, we'll get at during the summer and we have a very busy summer coming up. And, um, I believe, I think it's going to be forty-one workdays during the summer that we've got all this to do, but we'll get it done and, um, you know, move forward. About three weeks ago, I spent a week in Albany at, uh, asbestos training. I got my inspector and management planner licenses to Department of Labor. And I'm now going forward and starting the triennial asbestos report, which is quite a deal to bite off and finish. Uh, that's, the due date on that, I believe, is July eighth or ninth, something like that will be done long before then and we'll submit it on that day, um, that first week in July. And, um, I bet Andy Jackson came today and helped us out a lot, gave us a lot of, um, good guidelines to go by. We went down the records room, searched through a lot of, um, records from back in the eighties, eighty-eight starting, so we've got all that together and we'll, um, move forward. And I'd just like to thank everyone and Mr. Preston also, you know, for the recognition you gave to Chandler and Caleb and Cody. You know, having a state champion is something that you always dream about, but realistically, it doesn't ever happen. A lot of schools have lost their entire program history without a state champion and now we have three. And, uh, certainly, where our program really looks good moving forward, we've got a lot of good young kids. We have forty-some kids in the JV and varsity program will be coming back next year. Really pleasured to be able to be part of that. And I have to excuse everybody wearing the shirt and the tie, Mr. Preston, that was, this, that was for his, for his laugh. He always, he seemed to think that I was always dressed in a dress shirt and tie when we went to tournaments, you know, the sectionals and states and dual meets and things like that. And I, don't I, you must be dreaming. I wore it just for him. Thank you.
John, when, um, you had mentioned the asbestos training, or the, um, report, where does that report get sent to? Is that an annual report that has to be sent in?
Every three years, triennial.
Every three year, okay.
And that gets submitted to State Ed. Andy completed that report. He retired in March, March twenty-ninth of two thousand sixteen, so he completed that report in that month that he retired and submitted it to the state. And there actually, the, you know.
So that goes to SED, all right.
For, you know, lack of better words, they, you know, you drop that date as July ninth on that. And in that class, I found a lot of stuff that we weren't, we were lax on a few things. That's not the fault of anybody. It's just new stuff coming forward. And I'm certainly glad that I went, you know, spent the time up there and took that, you know, there's, um, a lot of asbestos in the buildings, especially this building, but it's all in a, in a safe state. It's all either encapsulated or out of the reach of anyone, you know, to be able to get to its, um, you know, such as floor tile, things like that. But the dangerous stuff has really gone, the, the pipe joints, the pipe valves and stuff like that. And, uh.
Yeah, because we've, over the years, have had several asbestos abatement projects going on.
We will never, not in my lifetime and not in some, a lot younger people's lifetimes, ever be asbestos free in these buildings, but we're in the state where we can keep it controlled. And, um, you know, we have to be ready for a Department of Labor audits and things like that. Because they could just walk in. We need to have, you know, all our ducks in a row and it really needs to be really taken care of, you know, real particular, um, painstaking things so that a Department of Labor walks in, Colleen will know right where to first call me and then I go to the filing cabinet. We have a whole filing cabinet just dedicated to that. Probably bring the stuff in the boardroom here and just lay it on the table, let them go through it. I was actually, I went to Roxbury last Thursday and ONT Bosse's Josh Reese was doing their inspection, their triennial report up there and I actually learned a lot from that. And, uh, you know, it's, it's really, it's an eye-opener when you get into that and EPA and OSHA, Department of Labor and State Ed, they're, asbestos is like on the top of their list.
Oh, sure.
Even more than pesticides.
Thank you.
Meg, would you like to say something or you don't have to?
I'm happy to be here. I'm getting my feet wet and I'm sure I'll have more to say next time.
Copping on it.
Transportation-wise, uh, we did our last of the three emergency drills required during the school, school year, the Friday before break. Everything went well with that. Um, I thank the principals for, for being out there when the buses pulled up to help observe. I need them there. They need to sign off on the paper that has to go to, to State Ed that shows that, that we did our drills. Spring sports is in, well, I don't have a full swing yet, but it's trying. It quit raining. We've had a couple that we've had to bring back here to play because other schools just weren't ready with their fields. But that's the next month and a half of, of go, 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 along with the field trips that are coming up. We just had another, uh, trip to New York City with the music department, you know, two weeks ago. Operation Safe Stop is, uh, if you're not familiar with that, the governor's, uh, traffic safety committee along with NIAP and, uh, New York State is, uh, it's just an awareness of school bus passing. Police are out in sections of, of bus routes where it's more common that it happens. The news will have stuff on there and, and up in Albany, they do big, grand things. So that's, that's May second. You know, it's funny, John talks about reports. There must be reports that are come due, you know, at the same time to State Ed because, you know, my non allowable pupil decimal, we do that every three years. And, uh, that, that's come due and I was talking with Tim, because he got notification. And that, that's come due, and I was talking with Tim, because he got notification of it, I hadn't, and then finally it come the other day, blocked the notification, which we have to do, this, this all, and I'm assuming it, it has to do with our aid ratio and stuff like that, it all comes full circle with that, because I have to, I, I have a new form, I have a form I have to give out to every driver. I have to start it, there's, there's starting mileage, ending mileage, how many kids are on, AM, PM, BOCs, and it has to be recorded on a, on a certain form that now is electronic. Before, it used to be paper, and I'd write it out, send it to the business manager, and they'd send it in through Sam's, right? So now it's all electronic, so I'm sure I can send it to them and it's done, they just have to send it in. So I've done more of Tim's work.
For the bus drivers to do that.
That we constantly talk about. But I'm not, I don't, it's only for him, she has to do it all. Affidavit of Compliance, another report that I have sent in with miles from January to December, any bus accidents are all reported on that, that all gets sent to State Ed. Again, that has to be in by July 1st. Other than that, I, I'm so glad to hear, you know, that people are coming forward with what Rachel did on the bus. So often, and, and all the news outlets that have contacted me say, we always hear the bad stuff, it's, it's nice to hear about the good stuff. And all the publications that I get, it's very seldom that you really see the good stuff in, you know, my school bus fleet, I, I reached out to them about it, and, you know, thank God we had the, the thing on our website, because everyone pulled from that, and, and that had all the information in it that they needed. BNT, like I said, had come, Reporter had, had stuff in there, so that's good, and, and like I said, whether it was said there or not, it was a matter of seconds from when it started through the whole thing to when it was done. I mean, if, if it was 20 seconds, it was, it was a long time that, that it was done. And she was choking on Starburst, and I heard you talking about Starburst. Oh, the Jelly Bay Starburst, oh, good. Other than that, everything else is going good.
I have to say, we're lucky to have a bus driver like Dave, because he and Rachel, you know, they're just, they were perfect people to be in that situation, and I, I know exactly how Dave reacts, I don't know Rachel quite so well, but, you know, what a professional he is, you know, I've been on the bus 100 times looking at trips and stuff.
You really can't stress enough the driver knowing his students on the bus, and that was a perfect example. He knew she had her, her certifications for stuff like that, so he knew he could call on her while he was taking care of everything up front. And, you know, we, we go over that stuff, when you, when we have our refresher courses and stuff like that, they talk about that. Know your students, I know you're just transporting, but know your students, you know, and...
Well, when you think about it, you know, your teachers will have, you know, a student for one school year. A bus driver could have them from kindergarten till they're a senior if they stay with that run, so they do, they have them a long time.
The, the only other thing is, you know, we talked about the training piece of, of bus drivers coming up in, in 2020, when it, they backed that out one more year, because they, like I said, it was a mess, nobody had it all figured out as to what they were going to do with the training course, because to get a CDL, and not to, you know, reiterate myself, but to get a CDL, you have to take a 30-hour training before you can even go take the written test to get your permit, and they haven't got it all figured out, and, and I, we kind of figured, hoped that was going to happen, and it did, they pushed it back one more year and we'll see where it goes from there.
But these are issues that'll have an impact in the district, because as you want to recruit people in the years, you know, how, how you make that happen, how you attract somebody to take that 30-hour course before they even walk into his door?
Right.
Is, is something that we're going to have to contend with.
See, right now with bus drivers, I mean, we, we don't, we don't pay them a nickel until they're driving school buses. I mean, a lot of places have sign-on bonuses, and they pay them during the training and stuff like that, so that's all stuff that, you know, like I was talking with Tim, you know, it's stuff that we're going to have to build in there to do. It ain't just us, it's, it's everyone.
It's everyone.
It's everyone that's going to have to do it that way.
How are you right now with subs?
Okay, okay. I've had several come in that just couldn't do this or this, so, but, yeah, I mean, I'm okay because of my retirement. You know, some of them that didn't want to drive, but then got away from it and said, okay, I'll come back and drive, because they missed it. So I, I had them, my mechanic is, is Godsend, because the morning runs is the, is the tough one. I mean, I had one good one, he went to work for the village, he didn't have to be to work till 9 o'clock in the morning, so I'd call him any morning, now he went to work for the village, he's there at 7, so I, I've lost that one. So, you know, it's, it's either me, my mechanic, or one of my monitors, Shirley Brown, is licensed, I'd have to pull her off to, to do a run and then put a, find a sub-monitor to, to run in her place, so. One keeps talking about retirement this year, which again, here we go, we get where we're okay, and here we go, we're back to square one. So we'll see from there.
Tim, any final points?
Well, firstly, you should never give me two chances to talk, but I do have two things. One of the things for Tracy is, is, you know, the, the, the fact that he pulls a, a driver, a monitor, to be able to be in the driver, the monitor isn't easy to replace either because they also have to have training as well.
Right.
So it's not like you just grab somebody else to sit there, and that person also has to go through a people training and hours and whatnot, so it is a problem for those. The other thing, the non allowable people decimal, that non allowable people decimal is used to figure out what your transportation aid ratio is, basically tries to figure, they want to figure out how many students you're transporting inside their mile and a half and three mile, right?
Right.
Two and three. So that's what that's supposed to be for, is to just make sure that you're not transporting students that wouldn't be allowable, the more you transport, the higher that decimal becomes, and then it has an effect on your aid, reduces your ratio. So that's about it.
So, so there's some schools that, that transport everyone within, I mean, if you're 20 feet from the school, they still pick them up and take them to the school. So all of those would be included in theirs when they do that, which drops their aid ratio right down for that. You know, they're doing a, something for the community in that aspect, but it's, it's just really hitting them hard, aid, aid wise.
Well, and it's got to cost them a lot more too. I mean, I think that they would have to have possibly additional buses, yeah, more costs.
So it's a service plus disservice.
And then, yeah, exactly, wow.
Very good deed, Ken.
Yeah.
Very good deed. Yes. So tomorrow, we begin our finalist interviews for high school principal, very excited about that. And you're a part of that, of course. We had, you know, I always think about the time after vacation of this spring break that we just had, is, 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 okay, now we're in the home stretch. And as part of that home stretch, we had administrative meeting, a team meeting today, and we talked about a lot of things that are out there, but getting closer and closer. And amongst those, of course, were graduation exercises, end of the year events, both campuses, whether they be field trips, field days, all of those sorts of things. We talked about possible vacancies, and we know that we have several vacancies with respect to special education for the coming year, but we just had a couple resignations tonight, so we also have at least ag and home and careers to be thinking about as well. So we have a couple of those that we need to be putting our heads toward. I talked to the instructional leadership about programming tweaks for 2019, 2020, trying to set some priorities with respect to budget, trying to set some priorities with respect to program, what do we want to really focus on, concentrate on, talked about, a little bit about the same with our, with our campuses, with our plants, and trying to put some plans together with respect to that over the summer, professional development during the summer, summer school program, and as I just said, a work plan, working with John, to put things together for the summer. So my, my head has turned, we've got those other things that are out there too, negotiations are still out there with the teachers. And, and with transportation, as Tim alluded to you earlier, one of the issues with that is how can we all get comfortable with the health insurance piece? And we are working through that, and everybody is trying to work with each other with that. But we, you know, it's one of those humps that, nobody wants to seal the deal until we're all comfortable with that, with that piece, and I don't blame them at all. So, you know, my head and all of our heads, I think, are, are working towards between, now we're looking at between tomorrow and September 1st, that's where our heads are. And it's going to be a good time. You know, I, I will say, I, I have to say, I have absolutely loved working with every one of these people. I know I'm going to love working with Meg, but everybody here, they've been, they are so professional, and I hope that, you know, they come here and they, they give you a presentation, they talk to you about what's going on, and I, I personally love that, I love going around the table and hearing what they have to say, and, and they don't have a problem looking at each other and saying, you know, I need this from you, or can you help me out with this? And that's, that's, that's a great work ethic and a great cooperative group that we have, Rick's part of that back there as well, and Justin up here is part of that as well, and it's, it's just been a joy working with all of these folks and putting some, some things together that hopefully, as next year rolls around, I'm, I'm hopeful that we're going to feel a lot of differences with our, with respect to our instructional program. Not that we have a bad instructional program now, we don't, but I mean, there's always things to look at and tweak in, you don't sit on your haunches and just let things go by, and then, they're not doing that, and that's, that's, for me, that's very exciting. So I appreciate all of you, I appreciate all of you too, but it's, it's been good. And we're looking forward to getting through the spring and into the summer and, and doing some of that tweaking, so it's, it's been good. I do want to have an executive session, however, to talk about a particular, the employment of a particular, particular individual.
All right, yes, so do we have a motion to go into executive session? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Thank you.